I know we have a lot of people. We're gonna start in one minute. So, one minute, we're gonna go ahead and start. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the June 11th, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you're here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to city council. On our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. The city code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of this meeting, Reverend Ann Kerschmeyer with St. Andrew's Episcopal Church will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Ely will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation and the pledge. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Holy One, we gather this evening united by our care and concern for our shared community, the city of Newport News. We come together to address the business that orders our common life: ordinances and leases, conveyances and codes, voting and appropriations. Please guide and bless our work. We give thanks this night for the life and servant leadership of Dr. Golden Bethune Hill. We thank you also for the privilege of being named an All-American City and for the creative and industrious citizens whose innovative leadership led to our selection. May we all strive to continue the good work honored by the award committee: reducing gun violence, nurturing youth, and providing compassionate help for those with mental health challenges. We thank you for the diligence and dedication of our elected leaders: Philip, Cleon, Tina, Patricia, Curtis, John, and Marcellus. We ask your blessings upon them and everyone gathered here this evening. Guide our speaking and our listening. Help us to see and seek the dignity of each person here tonight, especially those with whom we disagree. We thank you for the privilege of being part of this community, and we ask your blessings for our city and its people. Amen.
Please give me the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, do I have a motion to excuse Councilman Harris from this meeting?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Law.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. So, before we get started with the business of tonight, I think we have to do a presentation. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah!
So, good evening. Thank you all for joining us for tonight's council meeting. I am always excited as we convene for the purpose of conducting business. However, tonight is a very special moment in the history of the great city of Newport News as we continue to build forward. When I ran for mayor, one of the goals that I set for our city was to be an All-American City within three years. And some might wonder, Mayor Jones, you know, what is an All-America City? We already have a thriving military community, strong industries, engaged residents, along with baseball and some good food. What more could you want? And my vision went beyond all of this because I know that truly, our city is worthy to be an All-American City distinction. A very capable team, and by capable, I mean the best of us. Sarah, actually, can I get all the team captains to stand up? Thank you. And don't worry, we'll recognize the captains again. Was assembled in this past week, we traveled to Denver. This year's theme was Democracy Through Local Action and Innovation, and I am proud to announce that Newport News is a 2024 All-American City. So, instead of telling me about your trip, let me show you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Philip Jones. I'm the mayor of the city of Newport News, and we are excited to be here. The city of Newport News has long been on the vanguard of history, and we continue to set the standard for how a community should leverage innovation and collaboration to enhance civic capital. With that being said, let me show you my hometown, Newport News. So, as you can see, we are leveling up, strengthening democracy through local action and innovation. Our three projects focus on our citizens while addressing critical threats to democracy like incarceration, violence, and civic disengagement. They also provide hope and opportunity. And our city needed that hope more than ever. About three days into my administration, we had a national tragedy. How does a community recover from an elementary school shooting? Well, in Newport News, we knew that we had to build forward together.
We are addressing the national gun violence crisis in a collaborative, holistic, and grassroots manner. Newport News partnered with our local Christopher Newport University to conduct a data-driven community safety assessment. The nearly 2,000 responses helped us understand resident concerns and designed the change that our city needed. We then secured funding from the state to implement a community-based grant program to address gun violence. These grants focus on interrupting cycles of violence among individuals at the highest risk for committing crimes or being victims of gun violence. This year, funding went to 15 grassroots organizations. This effort directly addresses critical threats to democracy, namely violence, incarceration, and civic disengagement.
I was Catch More Kids, a nonprofit and one of the 15 gun violence disruptor groups funded by Newport News. Listen, literally, one bullet creates a ripple effect that shatters entire communities. We are boots on the ground, mediating conflicts, preventing retaliations, and creating safe spaces. We recently met with the White House Office of Gun Violence Prevention to share ideas about how cities and nonprofits can partner to reduce gun violence and save lives. Our city listens to and respects the voices of those who are most impacted and grassroots organizations who are in hotspot neighborhoods every day. The investment from Newport News is making our city safer. It is allowing our residents to realize their full potential, and it is helping our city thrive.
Has a solution for gun violence, but that's exactly the kind of innovative thinking that sets Newport News apart. Soundscapes is also a recipient of the Gun Violence Intervention Grant. We eliminate barriers and make the benefits of music accessible to historically disadvantaged populations by providing our after-school programs, instruments, food, and transportation free for all students. The student musicians that let us in... And the hundreds of others in our program are Newport News's future leaders.
The number-one issue highlighted on the community safety survey was mental health concerns. Newport News is the first city in the nation to design and implement a progressive, life-changing approach to mental health. The Newport News Care Program offers experiencing a mental health crisis hope instead of handcuffs. Helping individuals with mental health struggles is one of the greatest challenges faced by law enforcement today. The care program connects residents with first responders who are best equipped to meet their needs. The Newport News Care Team was dispatched to 574 calls in 2023. This year, we have already responded to 437 calls. Instead of facing possible incarceration or civic disengagement, individuals are now receiving the support they need.
I'm lying up front. Being a grown-up and an adult is two completely different things. Those of you here raising adult kids know exactly what I mean. My daughter graduated magna cum laude from high school. She was full of life, energy, and confidence when me and my wife dropped her off at college. We had no idea that just recently, medical professionals diagnosed her bipolar one and schizophrenia. And because she was an adult, the tender age of 18, because she was an adult, the tender age of 18, she sat in her dorm room and she faced it alone. Three semesters later, Jala was home visiting from college. She thought the house was on fire. My wife and I had no idea what was happening. We had no clue, and my baby was battling these illnesses alone. My wife called 911. The Newport News Fire Department team arrived. While on scene, they quickly diagnosed that Jala was in a manic state. They referred us to the care team. The supervisor of the care team got my daughter, the mental health services she needed. I never thought an individual less known than organization can show so much compassion and support to my family, but they did. They saved my baby's life, y'all. Thanks to the Newport News Care Team and my family, we accept that we are facing our new norm. We're moving forward, step by step, day by day, and we're facing our future together. Thank you.
Adolescence can be a challenging time for anyone. One or two steps down the wrong path, and some teens find themselves labeled as delinquents and possibly in juvenile detention. Incarceration is a fundamental threat to democracy. You can't participate in civic life if you're locked up. Virginia law made it impossible for communities to operate certain youth diversion programs until 2022, when we persuaded legislators to change state code. In March of 2023, the city of Newport News became the first jurisdiction in Virginia to operate a youth court. The philosophy behind youth courts is that teens who are responsible, who take responsibility for their actions and are sanctioned by their peers are significantly less likely to reoffend. Our program ensures minor offenders are not labeled and disenfranchised due to incarceration. It also encourages civic engagement from juror involvement to family and volunteer participation. The opportunities offered by Newport News Youth Court are innovative and life-changing.
Good afternoon. My name is Giovanni, and I'm a member of Mayor's Youth Commission and the Youth Justice Diversion Program. And it's an awful year. Aspiring to work in the field of law, I recognize the program's potential to advance my career goals, and it exceeded my expectations. The most remarkable aspect of youth court is not just the wealth of interesting learning that it provides, but the tangible, positive impact that it has on the community. I know for a fact that my involvement contributes to the meaningful change inside of my city. I've witnessed firsthand the transformative effects that the program produces. One participant, for example, made a complete turnaround in just a few months. It is an indescribable feeling, knowing that I played in helping somebody make a crucial change. Life is a work altered the course of their life for the better.
Every single partner on this stage, from our companies to our first responders, to our CEOs, to our college presidents, they have all helped us to leverage innovation and collaboration to promote democracy. So, what I would say to Newport News is we have put in the work to be an All-American City. We just have to bring this award home. At Newport News, we say dreams are realized. We smash atoms, and we build the world's best nuclear aircraft carriers and submarines. Anything is truly possible here. Thank you.
So, number 10. This community addresses mental health challenges with compassion. This community came together after a crisis. This community is committed to restorative justice. The first-time All-American City of Newport News!
So, at this time, can I have the team members come up? Team members come up. Hey, could we also get President Kelly as well as school board members as well? And superintendent? I know you would have joined us if you didn't have the graduation, so... Can I get school board, superintendent, President Kelly? And if you didn't watch the full video, so they selected 20 cities to be finalists, and then they picked 10 to actually get the award. So, we were down to the very last one, but what I will tell you is, when we were on the stage and they gave me the award, they said that by far, we were the best city that was there, and they wanted to see us sweat. So, what can I say about this team? When you look at the faces behind me, you are looking at the heart and the soul of our community. We have Newport News school students, we have business leaders, college presidents, city employees, community organizers, mothers, fathers. They represent the best of Newport News. When asked to embark upon this All-America journey, they stepped up, accepted the challenge. So, to each of you, on behalf of city council, I thank you for the time, for your treasure and your talent that you put in, represent us on the national stage. You are Newport News, and because of all of you, we are now an All-American City. At this time... At this time, we'd like city council and the manager to come forward as well.
Pom-poms, no pom-poms?
No, no pom-poms. You can bring it up, it's fine. Yep, but what happens if I just stand? Yeah, we'll just... But Curtis, I'll give you the heads up. It's Pat, where's Pat? She's coming. So, I'll say to this, I'll say, Vice Mayor and Council, this is the All-American City Award that we were bestowed in Denver. It is my honor to present this plaque to council in recognition and celebration of its achievement. Thank you all for your support and your vision as well. So, I think at this time, we are, to commemorate our first-time honor as an All-American City, we have this plaque that the Vice Mayor and Howe are going to now flip. And you'll see these popping up within... Alan, you got two weeks to get these... No! Well, sorry, these will start to pop up around Newport News. I think I'm supposed to turn it over to Alan right now. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. There's not a whole lot that I can do at this particular point in time to say that can top all that has occurred so far this evening. I really can't say thank you enough to this community, to all the members of this team in the way that you have responded to this opportunity. And Mr. Mayor, as mayor, we recognize how much the All-American City honor means to you, and we salute you for your tenacity and fortitude. At this time, I would like to present you with this special award that serves as a reminder of what this community can accomplish together. Your energy and determination are catalysts for change as we build Newport News forward.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone.
It has a light at base, too. We'll give it to you this evening.
Did you want this?
Oh, I'm gonna say you gotta say recess or something?
At this time, we're gonna take two minutes to recess, so if you're not gonna stay for the business portion, no worries. Just please exit. Thank you. Yeah, they wanna stay on the party.
I wanna party.
So, as the security closes the door, we're gonna go ahead with public hearing. Page four, item E1 is a request of an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a lease by and between the city of Newport News and Courthouse Green, First Home Association, for a portion of city-owned property located at 15194 Warwick Boulevard. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
From Regaza?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Might be a little bit of a downer, but I'm glad the neighborhood of Courthouse Green were in the agenda this evening. So, Courthouse Green is located in North District, north of an empty piece of concrete and parking lot that used to be Kmart in Orianna and Warwick. And the first agenda in the forefront, and the first agenda put in the forefront, the absurdity of Courthouse Green residents that can literally see public access park behind a fence, but takes an hour and an hour and a half to walk there. At its closest, the baseball field of Stony Park is only 250 to 300 feet away, yet it is two miles, two mile to walk. Courthouse Green is representative of most of the neighborhood we have here in the city. An isolated community, cut off from other neighborhoods and parks by a 10- to 12-foot fence. There's one and only one way to go in and out of this community. If you don't have a car or can't drive, well, tough, I guess. Oh, you are a kid and just wants to play baseball in Stony Park and can't drive? Well, maybe you can ride and bike along Warwick Boulevard. Well, maybe you can ride and bike along Warwick Boulevard, share the road. Can't afford a car? Well, earn more money, I guess, or walk to a bus a mile away and wait for an hour. Or you just want to relax at Stony Run, but you are disabled and can't drive? Well, you, the city, should have used this opportunity to use your leverage to negotiate with Courthouse Green to, at a bare minimum, a bus stop within Courthouse Green, because the nearest one can be a mile away, but have an easement for a public right-of-way, a public pedestrian-only path directly to Stony Run, so those kids can just walk to the park and play baseball, football, and without being reliant on someone else giving them a ride. Courthouse Green don't have fields. They have green space, but there's a culvert in the middle of it. Not sure where those HOVs go, but it's definitely not going to that sorry-looking playground that you have there. And you know what Courthouse Green has plenty of? Parking. This is why I'm pleading with y'all and council members, actually get out of your vehicle. I'm pleading with you to stop having a windshield view of the city. And actually, you know, and actually, yeah, and actually walk to your neighborhoods, your district, and take the freaking bus. Take the bus. My apologies. Mr. Mayor, I said, and I will say it again every time, you mentioned that the quality of life is a major factor in the decisions you made. This was a lost opportunity by the city in enabling a benefit in the quality of life residents of Courthouse Greens. Cut down that fence and open a pedestrian path to Stony Run Athletic Complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, request for floor, Mayor Jones.
Vice Mayor.
Sir, if you come back, real quick. As your, as your, uh, North District representative and also someone who was in and out of Courthouse for a while, and I've lived in Courthouse, I hear you, sir. So if you could stay back afterwards, you and I can have a conversation, and we'll see what we could do.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, call the roll.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Page 18, item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to make offers to acquire by purchase or condemnation portions of property for the Saunders Road Storm Project, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisitions. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Page 38, item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located in Hanover County. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 43, minutes of the work session of May 28, 2024. Page 63, minutes of the regular meeting of page 28, 2024. Page 94, resolution in memorial for Dr. Golden, Bethune Hill. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items F1 through F3, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions. Page 98, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Item G1 is a request to receive and open bids for granting a 40-year lease of a portion of city-owned property located at 500B Land Boulevard. Proposed ordinance will grant the successful bidder a 40-year lease of an approximately 1,638 square foot portion of the multimodal passenger station building for the operation of a rail passenger station. This is the location of the new multimodal transportation center. I recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up the bid. Please consider this correspondence as a formal response to the City of Newport News request. Amtrak is proposing $1 rent for the initial lease term plus a per rata share for the maintenance, upkeep, and expenses. Thank you. Page 134, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution approving the consolidated plan for housing and community development, annual action plan for fiscal year 2024-2025, including proposed use of community development block grant and home investment, investment partnership funds and certifications, and to authorize submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 CDBG budget is $1,485,362, covering neighborhood revitalization, unsafe structure demolition, economic development rehabilitation programs, property acquisition, and nonprofit assistance. The proposed home budget is $940,547, supporting first-time home ownership, housing rehabilitation, affordable rental housing development, and nonprofit housing projects. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page 146, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of a portion of city property located at 52014th Street to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Newport News. Staff has identified that approximately 3.24 acres of the 5.1-acre lot, referred to as Parcel 2, could be used to support operations at the adjacent S23 holdings and future seafood market sites, and to leverage future private investment and development. The remaining 1.65-acre portion labeled Parcel 1 on the draft plat would be retained by the city to meet storm water management needs. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Page 154, item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request to amend the FY 2024 budget, previously adopted on May 9, 2023, and amended on March 12, 2024, to incorporate additional revenue. The amendments include, number one, increasing the FY 2024 operating budget by $10,500,000 due to anticipated revenue surpassing initial projections. Number two, adding $70,421 in state funds for the Circuit Court Clerk's technology needs. Number three, recognizing an additional $490,000 from surplus equipment sales in the General Services Fund. These amendments will raise the general fund to $620,129,455, and the General Services Fund to $30,099,300, resulting in a balanced FY 2024 total operating budget of $1,119,674,961. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Page 163, item G5, Mr. Manager.
Item G5 is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and re-ordain City Code Chapter 15, Elections, Article 1, Voting Precincts, Section 15-49, absentee voting in person. The General Register is proposing to open a satellite office located at the Denby Community Center at 15198 Warwick Boulevard, Room 152, Newport News, Virginia, or such other location within the Denby Community Center. By distributing the voting population more evenly and reducing wait times, the new satellite office seeks to promote democracy by ensuring equal access to early voting facilities for all Newport News citizens. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page 166, item G6, Mr. Manager.
Item G6 is a request to approve a resolution accepting the donation of property located at 605 Hilton Boulevard, the current site of the Hilton Senior Center. Department of Parks and Recreation operates active lifestyles programs at six locations in the city, within the Hilton Senior Center, being leased from the Parkview Community Board since 1981. Recently, the Board offered to gift the property to the city for a nominal fee of $10. The city's inspection deemed the building to be in good condition, with routine maintenance expected to continue post-acquisition. The facility is vital to the active lifestyle programs, especially as there is limited, dedicated space for senior programming in the southeast community. It is recommended to accept the gift to ensure the continuation of the program's benefits. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 172, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have one appropriation this evening. The appropriation is to request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,335,293 from the fiscal year 2022 bond authorization in support of Roush Tower facility improvements. The Department of Human Services leases space in Roush Tower at 6060 Jefferson Avenue, where they provide benefit programs, adult and family services, and prevention and self-sufficiency services. Planned improvements across eight floors of the building include replacing existing carpet with high-quality vinyl tile, electrical receptacle updates, and painting. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve, item H1.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, request for floor, Mayor Jones.
Vice.
Uh, Mr. Manager, how old is, is Roush Tower?
So I don't know the exact date. The development staff may know this. I believe it was built in the sixties? Seventies.
Okay. I mean, so I, I will support it. From my time being on the Human Services Advisory Board, I know being in that building, I think we have a retreat coming up, and being able to really, really hone in and identify if we need to stay in that building, um, is something I think we should definitely look into. Miss Bluntmore, I'm, I'm sorry, this is a shocker, but, um, that, that building, I think we, we seriously need to consider whether we're going to stay in it. Something needs to be done, but I don't think just throwing, I'm, excuse me, putting money, money towards something that we don't know if we're gonna stay in there for too long. But again, I'll support this.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Vick?
Um, yeah, I totally agree, because, you know, I worked with the Office of Human Affairs years ago, and this was in the nineties, and we were there, but should you keep throwing money in? And, and to really think about, with the way Human Services operates now, um, is it conducive to the way the department actually runs? So I'm concerned about that.
Mr. Manager.
I think, um, Council, you've, you've articulated, um, um, very appropriately the position that the city administration finds itself in, um, as we are currently undergoing a space needs study. And, uh, Roush Tower is a, a, a really good example of space that we are using, that we really need to, uh, understand whether or not that space is continuing to meet our needs, as well as being, uh, functional, uh, for the service philosophy that we wish to, um, extend services to citizens of this, uh, community. So I think in a nutshell, uh, we are reaching a, a pivotal, uh, place where we need to start thinking about the space needs, uh, of our facilities in the future. Roush Tower is probably a premier example of one of a handful of properties, uh, that really need to come to the forefront. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, call the roll.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments, item I, matters are germane to council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Joanne Ray?
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joanne Ray. I live at 927 11th Street. I was deeply hurt by your attitude to ignore the pleas of the Huntington High School alumni to rebuild the school on the former site. Where it will be built is a less family-friendly neighborhood. However, that is not why I am speaking this evening. You have further added insult to injury by not clearing the area for the school. But, but, you have cleared the area for the Scott Center, the Doris Miller Recreation Center, and the Pearl Bailey Library. Are they more important than our children? Are they? You are treating our children as second-class citizens, as an afterthought. When you have 11-year-old students in the same school as 18-year-old students, you need not wonder why they are acting out. Don't you care about our children and their well-being? They are our future, our future leaders. What are you trying, what are you telling them? Young children have been sharing Heritage High School for more than four years. When will this end? When will you put them first? We have been waiting for a school. We were promised a school by 2024. It is 2024. We're going into 2025. Put our children first.
Thank you, ma'am. Kathryn Hodges?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Kathryn, and I live on Hustings Lane in Courthouse Green First Homes. Tonight, you voted on allowing for Courthouse Green First Homes to renew their lease for their visitors' parking spots on Hustings Lane for yet another year. In the seven years I have lived on Hustings, not once has the woodland property owned by the city been cleaned up. Just to clarify, I'm not speaking about the parking spots. Those are cleaned up, but the woodland that surrounds that. There is constant foot traffic going in and out of those woods from Manor to Hustings into the HOA. With that traffic, there are soda cans, food wrappers, empty boxes from porch pirates, and so on, that just collects in those woods. If you walk past it from the street, you can see Mountain Dew, everything just piling up. It looks like a landfill almost. In my recollection, it hasn't been cleaned in seven years, and in my neighbors' recollections, it hasn't been cleaned since two thousand and fourteen. That's ten years. And that was even done by a local church group that decided it was too much for them to continue taking on. All we're asking for at this point is simply to clean the woods a little bit. Not a lot, maybe twenty feet back, maybe clean up the trees that are overgrown and blocking our lights. It's really becoming an eyesore to those who live out there. We call three-one-one constantly, and nothing continues to change. So this is why we're here tonight, because we don't know where else to go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Of course.
If you, you gotta... If you stay back, I'll come back.
I figured.
Yeah, he's gonna...
No, no, we're good.
All right, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, the whole incident, the vice, take care of.
I got you.
My name is John L. Jones, Jr. I live at forty-five Saunders Road, like the Greek City Council and the mayor.
Good evening.
As usual, my timing is terrible. I came to talk to you about the fatality in front of my house last week, it was Christopher Cooper. You reference their military presence on the peninsula in their celebration. We heard about these nuclear-class subs that's built. He was the person that did that. He was a twenty-nine-year-old sailor that works at the shipyard on nuclear specialists on subs. So I guess this kind of, he is Newport News. I spoke with his father over this. He fell asleep at the wheel. I see on E-two, you're already, Saunders Road has a problem in front of my house where the drainage ditch is very deep. Cars run in it, they wreck. This man was ejected out of his car, and he was three-thirty in the morning, he was killed. There's been twenty-some fatalities on Saunders Road since the one neighbor moved there forty-five years ago. I know accidents happen, but it's gotten really out of hand on Saunders Road. People fly. I sent the City Council a video from my, front of my house. I don't know if any of y'all had a chance to see it, but it's, I sent it to your website yesterday to the City Council. So since you're already addressing storm improvements on Saunders Road, I guess the ball is rolling. So the only thing I would like to add to the City Council is please don't drop the ball on this. I spoke with Mr. Cooper, and I heard that he's lost his son, and you'll probably be hearing from him, too. So that's all I have to say to the City Council, and please move forward on this Saunders Road project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jayden Futrell?
Um, he's right here. He saw everybody, and he got scared to speak.
No, no worries.
He's going through a lot right now, so his presence means a lot in the building, but I will be speaking on behalf of him and me.
Okay, you want to go next?
Yes.
You get your time. Barbara Futrell?
Yes, I am Barbara Futrell. How was everybody tonight? I guess I agree with the nice lady that came up and spoke. When is our children going to be put first? I saw you tell, like, a couple other people to stay behind, but not once did I hear you tell her to stay behind. She makes a big, a big... The big thing is our children are being endured. I spoke with Patricia Woodbury, thank you for that. She let me know that my son's problem will not be addressed, to just let it go. But I'm here to tell you, I'm not letting it go. I spoke to John Ely, who called me and gave me a very, very nasty conversation. My big thing to him was, why are you worried about a catering when it was a thirteen-year-old child that was abused, that has a brain concussion that's on brain medicine? I have his injuries that he is enduring right now, and that's why he's not able to speak tonight. I brought him here to speak his story, because who else better to say it than Jayden himself? He has a long road of recovery, that's my job. But my thing to you is, I hear, I sit up here and I hear about all these millions and billions and, of our tax dollars, because it's our tax dollars. Why do we have to pay for y'all buildings to get fixed, when these Newport News buildings that's holding these people aren't doing their jobs? Like CPS, that this situation happened February twentieth, and I still don't have a sounding on my son's abuse. Two doctors called that abusin', who saw my son firsthand, and the injuries that they both said that they adored was two, they couldn't believe it. I thought from the two doctors calling it in, it would be taken more seriously, but it's been kind of being brushed under the rug. Also Ruby Ellie, who is friends with Marcellus, I didn't see him today, but also Galene in AAACP, I think that's why she's being protected, but my signature was forged on IEP federal papers, and the state is very aware of it. I sent all my evidence. I've been in contact with quite a lot of you. And my question to the deputy clerk is, why is CPS holding out on my findings? I'm just ready for them to give me my findings, so I can move on. It's either abuse, or it's not. I feel like it is abuse, everybody else does as well, and that's why they've not. I've been offered hush money that I did deny. I denied it because my son deserves justice, and he will get justice. And for Woodbury, it's not going anywhere, so your comment meant nothing to me, just to let you know.
I would ask that you address...
Okay, that's, that's fine, I just thought we could make comments.
You can make comments.
My son deserves justice.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I say after, like, everybody else, and speak with you?
Everyone, I think Ms. Ginger wants to, I think, right there. She's got you.
And why she be? Who is she?
She can introduce herself. She can come out, yep.
You are the mayor? Okay, but you'll be addressing my son's situation?
Yeah, we can, we can, outside. If you go outside, she'll take care of you right now.
Oh, no problem.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Valerie Veal? Is there a Valerie Veal?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, the sign's blocking you, I can't see.
Hello, Mayor, nice to meet you.
Good evening.
I've never met you before.
Great to meet you.
Hi, Council, this is my first time coming to a council meeting. I'm a resident of Wickham Avenue, and I also own a business on Warwick, over by the shipyard Warwick and Seventy-first. It's called Hound Haven, and it's for dogs. So if anybody likes dogs, come and ask me questions about the business, I'd be glad to tell you about it. I just wanted to mention that I'm very excited to see all the changes near my home on Wickham. It makes me excited every time I drive by to see all the changes that have been happening with the new residences put up, and also hearing about the seafood area that's going to be opening up, looking forward to that as well. So I just really had a comment and wanted to say hello.
Hello.
Thank you.
It's great to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, one sec, ma'am. Councilman Vick?
I just would love to say that I am your South District Representative, Tina Vick. So welcome. Welcome, and I'm glad that this was your first meeting, but so many people have the same things to be able to say, and to thank the city, our entire city, for all of the changes that have been such an improvement to the lives of people in our South District.
Absolutely, thank you.
So welcome again, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good time.
And then Eric Dante Pitt? If you pass it to the clerk, she'll give it to us. Did you want to say anything, sir? Okay, no worries. Okay, thank you, sir. Our next item is new business. Mr. Manager?
None, sir.
City Attorney?
Nothing, sir, just reminding you've got some new business in front of you as well.
I had forgotten about that. You got that, it was your turn? We can do it.
Sure.
Go there. City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Neely?
I just want to take the time to thank the staff to put everything together for all City Marathon, I mean, not all City Marathon, all, all the American City. So many events, so many events. It was amazing. I was watching, I was at the movie theater watching Bad Boy, whatever the new Bad Boy is for, and Curtis sent me the text. I started crying immediately. The teamwork of Newport News is just amazing. We're an amazing team, and we're doing great things. It felt so good to be yesterday at Harris Teeter, and they say, we're excited, we're all-American city. And that comes from not just the City Council, the work of the grassroots organizations, our mayor, our team, communications. It's just so many pieces that plays a part in this, this team, that makes me be proud to be on the City Council. When I first got on City Council, it was a little rocky. Blood pressure was a little high. I went to the, I went to the doctor recently, I got a normal reading. But that's because of this team that we're building here, you know? It's excitement in Newport News, the community is excitement, and I'm just so thankful that we are just moving in the right direction. I also like to give a huge shout-out to Communications. I went to the culture event they did last Wednesday at City Center, and just the excitement to see so many people just having fun, it was just amazing. So, great job on that event as well. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to you. Our mayor won it, this all-American city, so big, I'm, I'm almost more happy that he got what he won it, than we winning the award as a city, but I'm just excited to be here, and we look forward to doing great things in Newport News. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Long?
I just want to say congratulations to all the seniors who graduated this past weekend. Wish you well, and go off, do great things, and bring back some of that knowledge that you get elsewhere, and bring it back to the Newport News, because as you can see, we're all-American city here in Newport News, and we're doing good things here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Vick?
Oh, yes, I do want to say to the young lady that mentioned the Huntington Project, you know, Huntington has been a long process, and I'm just going to say this briefly, because I know the hour's getting late, but to know that we have, we do have a process, we are following the process, the biggest thing that has gotten us off-key with the Huntington and everything that's going to be really great once we get it all done, was the fact that we had the COVID, and it pushed the dates back. There's been some, some decisions that we changed, but the school board, rest assured that the school board and our mayor and council are working to make sure this project happens. It has been a delay, but it's not totally gone away. It will rise again. And I also want to make sure that I mention congratulations to our mayor, is, I have to say, I'm the, one of the longest-serving council members on the council, but I have to say, oh, thank you.
I'm with you.
Right, Dr. Woodbury, it came in at the same time, but to be with the mayor with this much energy, and the fact that, to just see a goal, everybody likes having, setting goals, and they come true, but to have the goal come true this fast about the all-American city, it's been an honor to serve with you. I just feel so blessed, and it's just been such an exciting time, not just, you have to add the Vice Mayor, Councilman Long, and Councilman Ely, to the, to the crew, somebody said the crew, to be able to serve with you, you know, every situation, people are going to have their ups and downs, but to be in situations where there are more ups than downs is, is an asset. And so I'm so appreciative of all the team, the staff, that helped us get to be an all-American city. And I do have to just add this last thing about last Wednesday at City Center, to communications, to the, everybody who was involved, it was just great. And what I remember the most is looking out in the audience to actually see the looks on the people's faces, and to really see how happy they were, and the fact that some people could not sit down and stop dancing. That is what Pac Dr. Woodbury wants in Newport News, people not to stop dancing.
Keep on dancing.
And so, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Woodbury?
Keep on dancing. I do want to bring attention to one thing. You know, we, we have a section of the city that does so much for us, and they never get any recognition, and that, those people are called the Conservatives of the Peace, and they are in most of our, some are here tonight, and I'm going to mention one of them, because he is very special, I knew him when I was on the school board, and he helped me then, he still helps me, his name is Kevin James. There he is, right over there. And these, these folks are really, they are really wonderful people who serve our city so well, and really rarely get any recognition. So that's what I wanted to do tonight, was to recognize our Conservatives of the Peace, and there are many of you, not just him, and thank you for what you do for our city, and for our all-American city now. I mean, you're a part of it. So thank you all for coming out tonight, and that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor, I know we have new business first.
Yes, I have some new business. The first is a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of Addendum Number nineteen to the employment contract of the city clerk. A copy of the ordinance is before you.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Councilman Long?
Yeah, we got, second.
Second.
I'm sorry, second, moved and seconded, call the roll, I was getting ahead of myself.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, six zero.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of Addendum Number one to the employment contract of the city manager. A copy of the ordinance is before you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, six zero.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of Addendum Number one to the employment contract of the city attorney. A copy of the ordinance is before you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carries, six zero.
Thank you.
All right, yep, just to wrap up for me, going to follow suit, and just shout-out our all-American team, who went down to Denver, or went up, well, it's kind of on the opposite side, up-down, you get what I'm saying. So went to Denver, they held us down, and I'm not going to lie, I watched the, I watched the, the final presentation, right? You know, you only can make ten selections, and they knew, we didn't know, apparently, that they were, they were saving the best for last, and so it was a bit, is a bit nerve-wracking, but I'm so grateful that they were able to bring this home, and so, in saying that, I want to give a special shout-out to comms, too, not only for the, what, AC, the cultural event that we had recently, but mainly just for being able to put together something so fast and so efficient. I just want to give it up to comms really quick. Cleeter team, y'all did a phenomenal job, and I just want y'all to know that for sure. And so, another shout-out, of course, is to the mayor. I remember when, on the campaign trail, where he said that if it did not happen, he's gone, It did happen, it did happen, so, and we were blessed for, we were fortunate to have him here, and I just thank him for his leadership for sure, and his commitment. I think the manager also already said it, just the focus and the commitment to do it, and pushing everyone to accomplish this, I think it was, it was phenomenal for sure. And then the last thing I'll close out with, while, while you all were in Denver representing the city, I had the opportunity to go to every single high school graduation. And goodness gracious, you talk about six graduations, fifteen-hundred-plus graduates, it truly was, was phenomenal. Our young people are doing some amazing things for sure, and so I want to thank the school board, I know they were here earlier, but the school board superintendent for having me, but I'm truly looking forward to their contribution to our society for sure. So with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I think I will wrap up, so a few business items. I just want to announce that our next meeting is going to be July second, so that's going to be a change, and then I'll go into my comments. So first, just thank you to the whole team that supported us, from the finance department, from communications, from all of the back office that supported us, and then to the team captains. It was a long, a long three days, and I'm really glad we were able to pull it out. Mr. Manager, I have just two items about All-American City. So the first is, we had city employees that were working Saturday and Sunday, and I know it's usually at the director level, but if we could take a look at, they could, like, get those eight hours as discretionary, they can get that back. I would love to take a look at that. The second thing for all city employees, can we take a look at July 5th? I believe it's that Friday, having, having that, having that, that day off. I think Dorothy in the back was happy about that, but, no, I really think, if you think about that All-American City presentation was more than just 10 minutes. It was the people that sat up at 1:00 AM. It was people who sat up Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. We landed at, like, 12:30, 1:00 AM this morning. So I think it'd be good for the entire employee to have July 5th off, and then have the ones who went on the trip to get those eight hours of discretionary time. And then the final thank you I have is to my wife, Jamila. We got, we got, you know, got married about two weeks ago, and from, from hospital shooting to, you know, chief calling the day after the wedding, to, to me getting straight onto a plane and going to Denver for four days, just thank you for all the support, and we